Hey everyone, welcome and welcome to another live weekly work session with GetOiling. We're very excited that you've taken the time to join us today to further your knowledge and how you can grow your Young Living business. Now, we promised you in our last email, if you're reading our emails about today's session, that we would be putting ourselves out there a little bit too. And if you don't get our emails, go to GetOiling.com/weeklyworksession so you can stay in a loop for all of our amazing upcoming training topics. And be sure to add info@GetOiling.com to your email address and star our emails. We use Gmail so our emails do arrive safely in your inbox so the little spam bots don't get you. Anyway, I won't keep you waiting around anymore to put ourselves out there like we were promising. So, as many of you know, I've been handling the vast majority of the support for GetOiling since we launched in 2015. We use a software tool to keep track of all the emails. So it numbers each email thread. And I looked this morning and I have handled over 30,000 email threads in the last four years. Yikes. So as we look to our future here with GetOiling, we wanted to serve you better on the support side than anyone person ever could. And to level up our support, I'm very excited to announce that I'm not the only one answering your emails anymore. Yay. Amanda, my wife, and the person who got everyone here at GetOiling started on this oily journey. And Kim, whom many of you have met at Arama Sharing in recent years, in addition to me, are now all going to be helping you with support to get the most out of GetOiling. Kim officially joined our team about two weeks ago. Welcome, Kim. Be saying something here in a minute. So we call this part of our business customer success because we're not just here to support you. We're here to help you be as successful as you can be with GetOiling. When you succeed, we succeed. Of course, Coach Ashley is going to continue to provide the business strategy and tactics you've been seeing during our weekly work sessions. But now we can serve you better with a full customer success team when you contact us for help. So we're all very excited about these changes and be sure to say hello to Kim or Amanda when they reply to your emails and I'll still be replying to emails as well. So, Amanda, anything you wanted to do or say hello?
Hi, everybody. Welcome this morning or afternoon, wherever time zone that you are at. But I am very excited to become more active with answering your questions and everything. So I am very, very excited to get to know each of our customers more than what I already do. So make sure that you send your questions in and so we can help you guys get your business growing even more. Back to you, Greg.
Yeah. Kim, you want to say hello to everyone today?
Hi, guys. Awesome. I'm so excited to be part of this team. So go ahead and send in yourself. I'm so excited to be able to help you guys. And I'll get your answers to you with the best that I can. And then just refer off to Greg or Amanda if I have any questions. But remember, it's been two weeks, so I'm still learning. But I will definitely be there for you guys to grow your business and succeed. So super excited. Thanks, Greg and Amanda.
Thanks, Kim. With that, I'll hand it over to Ashley here to kick off this week's training session, How to Put You Out There. I know this is a challenge for many, but even if it isn't for you personally and you're like the reddest red person out there, Ashley's gonna have some insights today that could help you out. So Ashley, over to you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. We have such an amazing team, you guys, and such an amazing community. So blessed to be a part of this. And we are so excited to help you with every aspect of your business growth journey with Young Living. So I've got some slides to prepare for you. This is a really popular question. This is something that we get quite frequently. How do I put myself out there? So if you give me just a second, I'm going to share this presentation and we'll get going. All right. Can we see my screen?
Your screen is looking good.
Fabulous. Thanks. All right. So just so you guys know, if you're brand new, if you haven't been here today, you didn't just get to meet our whole team, which is fantastic. We hold these trainings every single week for free for you, a Young Living distributor looking to grow your business. And this is something you can invite your teams to. You do not have to pay a dime to get the benefit of this training. The first part of this training is going to be, well, training. And then the second part, we will move over to Q and A. So this is also an opportunity for you, whether you're a part of our GetOiling community and use our amazing platform to build your business, or maybe you're just getting started and learning about who we are, you've got an opportunity to ask us questions about technology, about marketing, about business growth, and we can help you live here. So if you have questions that you would like to get answered today, go ahead and put those in the Q and A. And we will get to those just as soon as this training wraps here briefly at the top. All right. So without further ado, let's get into this. How do we put ourselves out there? Welcome again to everyone that is here and congratulations on taking the time, having the vision to build a better future for yourself and your family. I want to ask you a question and I want to see a show of hands here. Really, really want to see some participation today. I want to ask you guys a couple of questions first. How would it feel if you were 1,000%, 10,000% confident every single time that you set out to write a social media post or to create a piece of content like a blog post or a video? Or to just share Young Living? How would it feel if every single time you set out to do one of these things, you were completely confident, knew exactly what you were going to say and that it was going to work? How would that feel? Let us know. And what if every time you shared something, whether it's a post or a blog or a video or a presentation, a class? What if every time you did one of these things, people responded? They showed up to your classes, right? And signed up, of course, decided to say yes and make that leap. What if every time you went to do these things, you got the results that you wanted from doing them in the first place? How would that feel? What kind of comments do we have coming in here?
We have empowering confidence. That would be fantastic. Results would be amazing. So yeah.
Fantastic. Yeah. Good feedback, guys. And isn't it frustrating to feel like you're spinning your wheels? I know this is a common thing that so many of you guys have shared with us. You know, I just don't know what I'm doing. I'm posting, I'm posting, I'm posting. I'm not getting results. So here's the thing, putting yourself out there is a difficult guessing game. Now, some of us can actually win at a guessing game, just like some of us can win at slots, right? You can get lucky or you can maybe even when you get started in your business, have enough influence or enough confidence or enough connections or something to that effect to get you over that initial hump when you're getting started or to get you over a plateau just by virtue of some things that you've already got going on for you, right? A lot of us can win in the beginning with a guessing game, but at the end of the day, it's a challenging guessing game and a guessing game is still gambling, right? Not business strategy. So if you don't have the right foundation in place when you're putting yourself out there, you are basically rolling the dice as to whether what you're doing is going to work, whether that post that you make online is going to make a difference, whether the blog post you write, the video you make, or the presentation, the class that you set out to give. If you don't have a solid foundation in place, then you're rolling the dice as to whether or not it's going to work. And how many of us, show of hands, have experienced that? Just feels like you're rolling the dice, put a lot of work into something and then crickets, right? Or you just don't get out of it what you want to. We are going to solve that problem today. Now, this is the first in a series. And so I should say over the next three videos, over the next three live trainings we're going to do, we're going to solve this problem by getting to the root cause. All right. So this is the first in a series to help you put yourself out there in an authentic way, right? In a way that feels really good for you. So yellows, I'm talking to you. This is putting yourself out there in a way that feels good to do, that works and produces real results for you. All right. So who is ready to learn? Let's get started. All right. This is what getting out there really means, right? So what we see, what we think is putting ourselves out there is really just the tip of the iceberg. It's not that we don't have business putting ourselves out there, but we are putting ourselves out there with a Vegas slot strategy. If we're just blindly posting or maybe copying what someone else is doing, right? When we're putting ourselves out there in person or especially online. So what most people see, what we think of as putting ourselves out there is really just this tip of the iceberg here. And beneath it, and what we're going to be covering, and we will get to the mechanics of getting yourself out there. It's just secondary or rather tertiary in this case of the way we've broken these trainings down. So today, we're going to be talking about the why and the who, right? Next week, we're going to talk about the how and the what. And then finally, we're going to talk about the mechanics of it, such as specifically what kind of things do you say, where do you go, how do you post and things like that? Because what you're looking for right now, if what you came here today thinking was that I was going to teach you how to post on Facebook, understand that you can go post on Facebook, but if you don't have these things figured out, it may or may not work, right? All right. So we're going to get down to the core of this, get to the depth. There's a theme throughout this that I want to really drive home and I want you to understand. We are talking about transformational language. We're talking about transformational thinking as opposed to transactional thinking or communicating. Now, what do I mean by this? This means that instead of promoting, we are reaching through with our why and inspiring, right? So instead of making a post that is promotional and talking about a sale, we are going to go another way that actually reaches people in a way that can transform their thinking so that they are open and say yes, right? You know those commercials that come on in between shows you watch? If you watch television and they're like loud and they're like sale, sale, sale? You usually ignore them, right? Like you don't put down your remote and run to the store when you see them, right? The same thing is true for social media. People don't tend to act on something unless it has real transformative benefit that they understand to be true for them right now. And that's why we've got to focus on these core things. All right. So here's our foundation. Our first stage of the foundation is the why and the who. So today, we're going to talk about your why and who it is that you really want to be reaching before you even start putting yourself out there. Because it's really important to remember that putting yourself out there isn't just this giant net catchall. You don't want to catch every fish in the sea. You want to catch the specific ones that are right for you, right? So let's talk about this for a second here. Your road to success is a map, right? Like getting from A to B, if you want to go from one town to another, you've got a point A and a point B. Now, for most of us, and this is kind of taking, we're taking a 30,000-foot view here, right? We're not talking about how to write a Facebook post to put yourself out there online. What we're talking about right now is getting clear on your why, on your vision, right? So on your map, you're over here, okay? Your big why, the reason why you decided to join Young Living, the reason why you would get up an hour early each day to begin plugging away at something that would create meaningful change in your life and your community and your family and the lives of others, that's this big thing over here. It's the next pin on our map. What we have to remember is if we're aiming for Royal Crown Diamond, or even if we're just aiming for our next rank, understand that it's a milestone on the path toward your biggest why, your reason for doing what you do. Maybe a quick show of hands. Let me know that makes sense to you. You had a big vision, a big dream before you even found Young Living, right? So we are not pinning the ultimate onto the crown. We are not focusing on the transaction of PSKs or Essential Awards. What we are focusing on, remember that theme from the beginning, is transformation. And in order for you to get from A to B, you have to transform as well, right? But the key here is to be able to reach and transform others first. And that's where we're starting here. So we're going to start with your why. And some of you guys are going to find this familiar. You've seen this before either from me in previous trainings or you're familiar with this training. It's a fantastic one from Simon Sinek. He did a TEDx Talk or at our TED Talk rather on this topic. So when we're talking about the why, the reason why we do what we do, this is the reason why people ultimately say yes to us. This is the reason why the things that you would eventually post on social media or put into content is going to work for you if we start with why. So we communicate typically from the outside in. And this is where we get things wrong. We go from the most obvious thing to the least obvious thing. And I'm going to show you first what we're doing now and the way that we're putting ourselves out there that's causing us frustration and making things difficult and ineffective for us, right? And that's starting from the outside in, from the most obvious to the least obvious. So what does that look like? First, when we're sharing Young Living, what do we usually talk about first, starting from the outside? Young Living, obviously, the name, the company, the story, the founder. Essential Oils as a topic, right? Home cleaning, personal care supplements, all of the different things that Young Living is able to offer, right? So these are the things that we talk about first and we promote these things. And the reason why it's either a gamble or we fall flat is because we're going from the outside in, right? The next step is how, right? So we talk about the what and then we talk about the how. Seed to seal, therapeutic grade. We know all of these things and we know the value of these things. See, they don't mean anything to the person that we're trying to reach. The reason why putting ourselves out there is not reaching, is not converting for us in our efforts is because we didn't start with the why. People are busy, they're distracted, and they don't care unless they understand the why and the why pertains to something that matters to them, right? So the problem with what we do now, if what we're doing is not working, 99% of the time is because we are going from the outside in. People don't care about the how or the what until they know the why. So we have to start with our why first. Apple is a great example. Again, you guys may have seen this before, but if you haven't, and even if you have, it bears repeating. This is what Apple would sound like. And Apple is one of the most effective communicators in terms of putting themselves out there as a brand in the world. This is what they would sound like. We make great computers. They're beautifully designed, simple to use and user-friendly. Want to buy one? Does it really land, right? So we would go out and say, I am a distributor for Young Living Essential Oils. I'm going to have a class teaching you about X, Y, and Z about essential oils. Want to come? See, that makes a lot of sense to us, but to the people that we would put ourselves out there in front of, it doesn't quite connect. Quick show of hands. Does this make sense? Do you see how this can miss the mark when we're communicating with others? Now, I'm going to teach you guys real quick. This is how we can reach people more effectively. And again, over the course of the next three weeks, because this is a big topic. Over the course of the next three weeks, you're going to learn the foundation and how to go about communicating in a way that is transformational instead of transactional and actually produces the big results that you want. So this is how Apple actually communicates and what we should take note from. In everything we do, we believe in challenging the status quo. We believe in thinking differently. The way we challenge the status quo is by making our products beautifully designed, simple to use and user-friendly. We just happen to make great computers. Want to buy one? Now, see, this is speaking directly to the person that Apple wants to sell to. Now, the thing is, a lot of us, we don't fit the Apple customer avatar, if you will, to use industry parlance. The customer avatar, the person that Apple is talking to is, you know, is someone who looks like a lot of these folks in line. I don't think that this is the one in New York City, but it could be one of the many in New York City. These look like a bunch of city kids. They're the first mover type of personalities. And when they say, we believe in thinking differently, they are speaking directly to this person. This is why they're so effective. So we've got to get clear on what it is that we're about and who it is that we're speaking to in order for people to perk up and say, I am going to that class, right? I am going to sit down and listen to this. I'm going to follow you because you know something that I don't and I need more of what you have. See, that's the transformational impact that we need to be making when we put ourselves out there. We need to be making that connection and speaking directly to the people that we want to be listening. All right? You guys see the difference? Quick show of hands. Does this make sense? You see the difference? It's a big difference. It's a transformational difference. Apple isn't just saying, we make great computers. Want to buy one, right? Our oils are therapeutic grade. Want to buy some, right? No, we speak directly to the person that believes the thing that we believe and tell them why we are doing what we're doing and then invite them on a journey, right? To be a part of something bigger. Now, people don't buy what you do. They don't buy that you are a Young Living distributor. They buy why you do it. So we want to get down to the core of what that why is. And that why is not hitting your next rank in 90 days. That why is not hitting Royal Crown Diamond in three years, right? Or whenever your timeline is. The why is bigger for you, right? So your goal isn't to sell to everyone. It is to work with those who believe what you believe and who resonate with your why, who share aspects of that, right? When you look at it this way, things are going to get a lot easier for you. You're on a mission. You're on a mission to change lives. You're on a mission in some ways, can we agree, to change the world, right? There are things that are very wrong with healthcare, right? With personal care, with our food sources and systems. There's a lot wrong in this world and there are things that you know that can help make a dent in the big problems that need to be fixed. And if you can tap into the why, the mission, the reason behind what you do, it can start to shape the way that you communicate so that you feel good about what you're saying, you know what to say, and you know it's going to make difference when you put yourself out there. So it's time for you to start a movement. Start thinking in this bigger way. Now, the question becomes, who do you want to join you? Now, I want to talk about the first follower principle and I've got a quick video that I actually want to share with you guys. But one of the most important things that you need to remember as we start shifting over to talk about the who in this formula is that at the end of the day, just like I was saying, not every single one of us that owns an iPhone looks like a guy that lives in Midtown Manhattan, right? Apple eventually was able to attract a whole lot of people to its products, but they really started out drilling down, talking to one particular type of person. We are going to be looking at this strategy and putting yourself out there in the same way. Because the first follower, or in the instance for you, even if you already have a solid team, when you start making the shift, the next person that you attract into your business as a customer or as a teammate, this is what you want to start building. You want to get this first follower. Because the idea here again is not transactional. It's not let's move, let's move OGV. This is about a transformational activity that is going to create a situation in which people are so on board, you don't worry about retention, so on board that sharing for them is also easy. And duplication comes naturally in your organization if you shift your thinking to this transformational way. So the first follower principle, there's a great TED Talk on this as well. And there's a video here that I want to share with you guys. It's really brief. You may find this familiar. This is something that started circulating around on social media handful of years ago. And it is one of the most relevant videos where putting yourself out there, especially in our industry and network marketing and for Young Living, this is so applicable. So let's take a watch and a listen. All right. That's great, right? Can I see quick confirmation, one of our teammate panel here? And you got the audio for that, right? We didn't just sit and watch, like, were you able to hear it?
No, the audio didn't actually come through, but.
Oh, no. It didn't for me either.
I'm sorry about that, guys. And maybe those were coming in the comments. So just what you just saw there was that you had this one guy looking crazy at a concert and he's dancing. And then there's the first follower. Now, what the first follower does is he validates the guy who's decided to start this movement. This guy's like, hey, you know what? I'm going to get moving. I'm going to start dancing, right? And this other guy's like, you know what? I'm going to do that too. What we're looking for is that first follower. Because that first follower is who validates your message and then teaches other people how to follow too. And then that creates a movement. A movement begins with the first follower, right? And so what we're looking for, and this is a huge, really, our main takeaway from the who part of this training, is identifying who we want that first follower to be, who we want to lock our arms with and dance with, right? Who is going to validate, jump in and say, I believe this, I'm with this, let's go. Now, listen, this may not be your best friend or your sister-in-law or your cousin or your friend from middle school or even one of the first 50 people that you introduced Young Living to. But when we talk about putting ourselves out there so that we can attract more of the right people to us, we want to be clear on who this is, right? We need to be speaking to that person. That person who's going to say, I'm going to dance too. Because once they start dancing, other people start dancing too. And you create momentum socially and you create a movement. All right? Makes sense? Are we following? Quick show of hands. You got any questions at this point? All right. Oh, I love it. I love it. Good job, guys. All right. So the question now becomes, who do you want in your tribe? Now, remember, we just saw that video. We got the one guy dancing and he attracted the next guy who was, you know, who had the same kind of crazy, right? And crazy dance moves. And the people who came and then came and this huge clump of people formed, some of them aren't necessarily the ones that would have been attracted in the beginning, right? But it takes finding that core, the first ones, attracting the tribe, and then the momentum comes, all right? So don't be afraid in the beginning, or if you want to shift your strategy and start to become more effective, to narrow down who you're talking to so that you can speak clearly to them in their language and they can say, yeah, I'm going to stand up and dance with you in the middle of field, right? Metaphorically, that's what we're looking for. So who do you want in your tribe? Who are you most qualified to help, serve and lead right now? And this is where we get hyper-specific. A lot of the time, the person that we're looking for is a version of who we were before we discovered the path that you're on today with Young Living, right? So let's just say that you were struggling with allergies, your life you felt was out of your control. And it's not just Young Living and the products, right? Because we also have to be compliant here in our language. But we can say that because of the lifestyle shifts that I've made and the products that have supported those lifestyle changes, I now have control over my life. And if you put that message out there, other people who have been struggling with the same thing are going to say, I believe in a world where I don't have to deal with allergies and have my life controlled by them, right? And now this is someone that you're uniquely qualified to assist. You're not their doctor, obviously, right? But you are someone who is proof that something different can work and that there is something better for someone who has struggled with the same thing that you have, right? That's just one example. There's so many ways to look at this, but the easiest place to start is what's a problem that you have been able to solve, something that you struggled with that you now no longer do? Or that you are well on your way to chipping at and getting resolved, right? You're inviting people on a journey, people who have something in common with you, people who believe some of the same things that you do. And it doesn't even necessarily have to be health and wellness related. This can be about any number of things. What's your passion? What's your why? What's the big change you want to make in the world? And adjacent to that, who can you help right now? Who shares a similar why, right? Who are you most qualified to help, serve and lead? And what are their goals? What are the outcomes that they're looking for? Because this is really important as well. Now, just so you guys know, this may seem still like we're at 30,000 feet and we are. We are going to be zooming in closer into how you put this into action and how you put yourself out there over the next couple of trainings. But these are just the two most important things that you have to start with. Why are you doing this? And who are you here to help? Who are you going to attract as that first follower? What are the goals? What do they want to accomplish? Because you need to be able, once you start putting yourself out there, to speak in the language that shows them that achievement of their goals is possible sooner rather than later and that you have the map, right? So what are their goals? Be clear on what those are as you're figuring out who this person is that you want to attract. What are their challenges? What are the roadblocks? What are they struggling with that maybe you've struggled with? And you're qualified to say, I've been there, I can help you, right? Everybody here right now has something like this. You are an expert in what you have dealt with in your own life. It doesn't mean that you're the expert of everything, but you can. It doesn't mean that you're the expert of everything, but you can lead. Everyone here, everyone watching this, you can lead. There is a topic on which you can lead and there are people who are waiting for you to lead them. Right? Now, let's talk about what you're going to do next to put this into action. First, you're going to get incredibly clear on your why. What's your big reason? Why are you on this journey? Right? Why would the crown be in your sights if that's what you're aiming for? Or if you are more clear on that big picture, draw it out and get it really specific. Right? So I don't want to just say, I want financial freedom. If you can ask another why of, of the statement, then you're not there yet. So I want financial freedom. Why do I want financial freedom? So that I can spend more time with my family, so that I can invest, invest in what? Why? Right? What's the big reason? What's the big world-changing reason? You want to be doing what you want to do, why you want to achieve the goals that you have. What are the values, the core pieces of what make you who you are and what motivate you and guide who you are as a person? Right? Get clear on that and write it down. Next, you want to get specific. Who do you want in your inner circle? Who do you want to attract as the next crazy dancer coming up and dancing with you so that the rest of the crowd follows? Right? Who do you want? Who can you help create a transformation right now? Right? Again, remember, we're not thinking, who can I sell oils to right now? No. Who can we help to create a transformation right now? If you can help somebody create a transformation, you've got an essential rewards customer for life. You've got someone who's going to share, right? Who could you help create a transformation right now? And who are you uniquely called to serve? Who are you attracted to and vice versa? In a positive way, because I know that sometimes we have work that we need to do and maybe we don't always necessarily attract the right people. Who do we feel in our soul, in our heart, who are we called to be of service to? And what are the characteristics, the habits, the hobbies, the interests, the ideals of this person? Right? And again, you don't want to necessarily stay exactly where you are. You might want to look at this in the context of your big goal picture. Because sometimes when we haven't done our mindset work to be able to achieve the next big thing in our lives, we also haven't necessarily done the work to realize the who of what we're attracting and retaining around us socially in our networks, right? Because we have to remember that we need to be elevating, helping others to transform, but also elevating ourselves to our best version of ourselves, right? So understand who this person is. Write all of this down as well. Describe this person. Don't be afraid to get super-specific because remember what happened in that video. You start dancing, that first follower comes along and then this trickle and then a momentous change with lots and lots of people. Don't worry, the rest will come. If you go too vanilla, if you go too broad, then you're never going to attract that first person to be bold and link arms with you and create a movement. Right? So who do you want that person to be? Who do you want those first five or 10 people to be? Because what you'll find is, especially if you're using the tools that Get Oil-ing provides you, you can start creating things that attract those people from all corners of the globe and you can create a global movement and a global team together. All right. So make sure that you write those things down, your who and your why. Because we're going to use them on our next two weeks' trainings. All right. So next week, we're going to get into the how and the what. And then finally, we will get into the mechanics of getting yourself out there. So if you want to attend more of these trainings, you want to see the ones that are coming up in the coming weeks here, go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. And you will get notifications right before we go live and the replays as well. All right. So now we are on to our Q and A section. If anybody has any questions, if you want us to roll up our sleeves and get into some technical and marketing work with you, we are here to help you do that until the close of the session. All right.
No comments.
Okay, cool. Who has any questions about the, even just the material today? Or, um, if you have any questions about putting yourself out there, about, you know, making adjustments to your own message? If you want any personal feedback, uh, I'm, I'm here to help you do this. Awesome. You guys are great. And are any of you guys here today, another one as well, are you clear on your why? Share it here with us. Let's talk about that.
We have a question from Gwen here. I have tried multiple times to get narrowed down to my why and I struggle digging deep into who I want to serve? Question mark.
Okay, okay. So where I like to start with this and what we've done in, say, like our, um, our Become An Icon Personal Branding intensive, this is actually one of the things that we really dive into in that course. Um, a good place to start, if you're not really clear on, on narrowing down the why, uh, is sometimes, just as, you know, this, this isn't the thing for everyone, but it certainly was for me and it can be for a lot of people. Um, to think back to when you were really young and you believed, you know, that, um, that unicorns were real and, um, you know, and mermaids and, and, and you believed in, you believed in magic. You believed that anything was possible. You believed in the hoverboard, like as, as like the, the one from Back to the Future. Like you, you had, um, you had none of the jadedness of, of, of adult life, right? Where, where we started becoming pragmatic and, um, and, and uninspired frankly, in a lot of ways. Because we are, you know, we're, we're dealing with the things that we have to deal, deal with as grownups. So what, and, and Gwen, if, if you want to, to answer these questions, I'd, I'd love to help work you through this. Um, but you know, what, what was the big change that you wish that you could see in the world? Or what did you want to be or do? Um, you know, back when you still believed that magic was possible. Right? For me personally, I remember at a very young age, um, the, um, I learned about, I, I learned that there were children in the world who were starving and it boggled my mind. I didn't come from a family of great means, uh, but we had enough. And it was, it was beyond me to understand that, you know, I could go to the grocery store with my mother every week and see all of this food and then think that there were children somewhere who were starving. And I think I was eight, seven, eight years old. And, and so it became important for me to figure out a way that I could play a part in fixing that problem. This is the kind of thing that you could have right now, ending world hunger. There are people who have made that their mission and they have gone on to great lengths to be able to help solve that problem. It's not eradicated, right? Your, your big why, the thing that you want to do can be a problem that's not solved yet. Right? Start thinking in, you know, put on, put on some, some Oprah pants, you know, or like Richard Branson or Warren Buffett, like start thinking big. They're made of the same stuff that you are. If you had their money, you had their influence, what would you do? What problem would you solve? That's where you're going to find the answer and narrow it down, right? To get really specific. And then of course you see along the way, all right, where, where are the milestones? What can I, what can I do? Right? Because we don't wake up tomorrow with Oprah's bank account. But, um, if what I really want is to be able to build schools in Africa, which Oprah has done, then, um, you know, then I need to start thinking about foundations, right? And, and thinking in the future. So what's the kind of influence? Who are the kind of people that I want to be attracting in a movement in that direction? Right? This is big thinking. This is 30,000-foot thinking. Um, and it's a good thing to do because when we're only dealing with the problems and the issues and the activities that just come up in our face and our day-to-day lives, we're missing the big picture. And we could be making leaps and bounds in our business and in our personal development if we can see what's on the horizon. Right? The reason why Royal Crown Diamond looks so far away to, to the majority of us is because it's what we put on the horizon. We put something out a little further away from that, it becomes a lot easier to see how you could get to that place, right? If, if you have made a goal of something that's exponentially bigger than Royal Crown Diamond, then I mean, Royal Crown Diamond starts to look kind of small, right? You got to expand your thinking. I hope that that helps. Um, let's see, empowering women to support their family while living in their own groove. I like the way that you put that. Why do you want to do that? What's the reason? Right? Because we, we can agree, and this is an important thing to remember as well with your, your why, figuring out your why. A lot of things feel good and other people can say, yeah, me too. I want to help women support their family while living their own groove. But why? What is it that stands in the way of women doing that right now? So now let's identify the problem that you want to solve or the set of problems. What are the reasons why women aren't living their own groove while supporting their family? Would love to hear that from you, Diane. That's where you start digging in and you start getting specific. And that's when you start figuring out the things that you can actually start doing right now. So maybe, maybe you start empowering women with personal development. Maybe you start empowering women with simple and easy recipes to, you know, to cut some time out of their week. Maybe you help with time management. You got to start figuring out what your passions are along those lines. And then, then that's the thing that you start talking about. You know, like I'm here today to talk to you about this thing because my goal is for you to achieve this. Right? That's where you start seeing the transformation and the way you communicate with people. All right. Uh, we got a comment here. Have a lot of personal experience in multiple health conditions, celiac, diabetes, Lyme autoimmune, and I'm mid-50s, plus I'm a middle schooler and a high school student. Bless your heart. I have, I have a middle schooler as well. Um, also an RN and in health coach training, so I struggle to be able to narrow it in. How can I narrow it down? My head is so full of information that were to focus first. You are not alone. So again, what, what I would recommend for you to do is to step back. 30,000-foot view. What's the big problem? What's the big vision? What's the thing that you want to fix? Um, and, and think about, think about it this way. You've got a lot, especially where you're talking about your, your health struggles, right? You also have a background, right? And an educational background. You've got a lot of really good things working for you. Um, but what's the one problem that you want to solve first? In terms of your health coaching, and this is something that can go really well hand-in-hand uh, with Young Living and you, and with using Get Oil-ing to attract health coaching clients as well, um, is, um, if you identify, if you haven't started working with clients yet, who do you want that person to be? You know, if, identify, and, and we'll get into more of this next week and in the following week. But, um, but think about this, the problem that you can solve right now. So if someone came to you and they were struggling with a problem, you have a map for them. You're not going to solve it for them today necessarily, but you've got a map. You know how to, you know how to solve the problem, whether it's from your education or from your own personal experience, obviously, in, in your case, working in the products from Young Living. Um, how would you help them solve their problem? Right? So I would look at it from that perspective. You are going to benefit in getting a more narrow perspective in terms of how you go about doing this and what you offer, Karen. Um, as, uh, as we go through the next couple of weeks of this training. Um, but I would recommend that you go step back, see if you can narrow it down to something, even if it's a big narrow, right? Like i- if you're going to pinpoint and say, you know what? The one thing that pulls all of these things together is our broken healthcare system in the United States. And, and so now you know, it's not just about educating people, it's about creating policy change and activism. Right? And that's if that's your interest, right? It could be, it could be about food sources. It could be about anything. What's your passion? What's the reason? Like what's, what's the thing that, that lights you up and gets you engaged? That's like, let yourself be led to that place, the thing that you could just go on and on talking about. Um, the thing that you could sit and just right now, write 10 pages about and then write 10 more. Like what, what's that thing? All right. Good questions, you guys. If we got any more, bring them at me. While we're still here. Uh, next week, we will be talking about the how you help this person and how you communicate that. Um, and this is definitely how we, um, how we work through the, okay, I really just want to post about the Young Living promo and get into the kind of posts and language and sharing that makes someone want to show up and take action as opposed to saying, oh, okay, you have something to sell me and they may or may not be interested. Right? Awesome, awesome. All right. Good questions, guys. We got any more before we get going? I'm so excited to see you guys put this together. Make sure you write those notes down. Um, first, your big, 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 big why? Why are you doing this? What's the thing that gets you out of bed? If you would say, I'm going to get out of bed two hours early every day for the next 90 days and I'm going to, you know, in, in that additional two hours, I'm going to write or make videos or, you know, create materials for classes, what have you, right? What's the reason? What is big enough to make you do that? And if you have something that's doing that, what is it? And how, and, and then we're going to start getting into how we can infuse your language with that in the coming weeks. Now, the second thing is you want to get clear on who this person is that you want to be helping. And you can get crazy specific, right? Uh, we've actually been doing this on a project that we're working on separately. Um, you, you make up a name for them, give them an age, where do they work? See, these are demographics. And then there's psychographics. Psychographics are the habits, the hobbies, the, the proclivities, you know, the politics. Um, the, where do they shop? What brands do they follow? Who do they follow? Right? Um, build a profile out. Who is this person? Because it's going to help you get a better idea of who you're speaking to. Doesn't mean that that's exactly the person that you're speaking to every time, but you're going to have an avatar and it's going to feel good and right and make sense and you will feel clear every time you go to speak or write or make a post. All right. Good deal. It sounds like you guys are clear on what's next. Um, yeah, we'll see you on the next training. Do we have, um, you guys want to say some stuff before we wrap? Because we got the whole team here. This is so cool.
It's been great. Uh, awesome training. Thanks for joining today. Commander, I think him was having some audio issues, so one of you wants to say goodbye again. But thanks, everyone, for joining us.
Yeah, thanks for a great training, Ashley. This was awesome today. I'm excited for the next few weeks. Yay. And we will see everybody on, uh, with, uh, emails or, or questions within, uh, customer service as well with our customer success.
Absolutely. All right. Thanks, you guys, for being here and we will see you on the next training.
Bye.
Bye, guys.